One, I am going to call to order the April 28th, 2025 Cedarburg School District Meeting. This is a regular meeting of the Cedarburg School Board and is a public meeting. Prior notices have been placed in the district and additional copies were forwarded to the city and town of Cedarburg as well as the News Graphic and Milwaukee Journal Sentinel. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. And I'd like to start off the meeting by welcoming our newest board member, Paul Demczek, who was elected on April 1st. Welcome, Paul.
Thank you.
All right, well, per policy, we elect new board members within 30 days of the 4th Monday in April, and as has been done in the past, we're going to use written ballots. Given we have a board member participating virtually, we are going to follow what was done in April 2021 when that same situation occurred. That board member will text our board secretary Brenda Roth her vote with the name and office she is voting for. The members present here will write their vote on a piece of paper which will be tallied by Brenda Roth. The positions we are voting for are president, vice president, clerk, treasurer, and secretary. So we will start with the president, and I will take nominations for that office. I would nominate Laura Strovel. I will second that. Any other nominations? Well, I guess then we will take, we don't need to have a written ballot, we will take a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, thank you. Elizabeth, can you hear us?
I'm going to hide from that.
Okay, thank you. So the next officer position we are voting for is vice president. Do I have any nominations? I'll nominate Kate Erickson. I will second. I will nominate Kate Metzl.
I'll second.
I second that.
Okay, any other nominations? Okay, Brenda, can we take a written vote, please?
Okay, for the vote of vice president, I have five votes for Mrs. Metzl and two votes for Mrs. Erickson.
Thank you. Okay, the next position we are voting for is clerk. Do I have any nominations for that position? I would nominate Nick Silvaji.
I would nominate Elizabeth Charlotte.
I will second Kate Metzl's. Do we have a second for Nick's nomination? This was for which office, Laura, could you remind me? Clerk. I'll second. Okay, so we, any other nominations? Okay, we'll take another written vote for clerk.
Okay, for the officer of clerk, I have five for Mrs. Charlotte and two for Dr. Silvaji.
Thank you. And the next position I will take nominations for is for treasurer.
I would nominate Nick Silvaji.
I will second that. Any other nominations? All right, we can take a vote for that. All in favor of nominating Nick Silvaji as treasurer of the Cedarburg School Board?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Vote passes seven zero. Thank you. And the last position we have is for secretary, and I will nominate Brenda Roth. I will second. Do I have any other nominations for that position? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the vote passes seven zero. Thank you. So we have the president is Laura Strovel, Kate Metzl is the vice president, Elizabeth Charlotte is the clerk, Nick Silvaji is the treasurer, and Brenda Roth is our secretary. Thank you, everyone. And with that, we can move to the next order of business where Dr. Clark will...
First go there, Mr. Charlie.
Oh, I'm sorry. Where am I going?
Okay.
We are going to, I'm looking for a motion regarding the 2025-2026 Board and Committee Meeting Calendar.
I would make a motion to accept the 25-26 School Board and Committee Meeting Calendar as presented.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? I just want to double check for the dates that are noted and read. Those are Thursdays and all the others are Wednesdays. That's correct?
Yes.
Okay, anything else? Okay, let's take a vote on approving the 2025-26 School Board and Committee Meeting Calendar. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The committee meeting calendar is passed seven zero. Thank you. Now we'll go to Dr. Clark for recognitions.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
All right, the state of Wisconsin has declared the following proclamations. April 2nd is World Autism Awareness Day. April 3rd is National Professional Appreciation Day. April 5th through the 11th is Week of the Young Child. April 6th through the 12th is National Library Week. April 20th to the 26th is National Environmental Education Week. April 21st to the 25th is Out of School, Out of School Time Professionals Appreciation Week. And then the whole month of April, the following are recognized. It is the School Library Month. It is the Autism Acceptance Month. It is the Month of the Military Child. And the Bilingual Multilingual Learner Advocacy Month. All proclamations are available on the district's Board Docs webpage.
Thank you.
Thank you. No, I'll take this too. Following that, we have John Hannum, the CHS Athletic Director, who presents the Winter Sport Recognisms.
Thank you very much, Jared. I'm excited to be here this evening to talk about the accomplishments of our student athletes from this past winter sports season. And before we get to that here, I just wanted to thank Coach Brian Lehrer for his years of service. He announced his retirement from coaching recently. And if you take a look up here, you know, just had an incredible career, but more importantly, you know, was his dedication service to our student athletes. And, you know, for someone personally here, I played for Brian, coached with him, and, you know, he really put CHS football on the map. You know, when he took over, you know, the football program was in a very tough spot and instantly found success, and he was able to sustain that. So we want to thank him for that and the relationships he was able to foster along the way here. So we're in a much better spot right now, and just want to thank him for everything he's done along the way. And we have recently, with our clubs and extracurriculars, has just had a ton of success here. So if you take a look up on the screen here with our math team, they were conference champs, which is the first time in a long time. And for DECA, they're currently competing right now. So for Max and Nick. And then FBLA for Andrew Morgan and Brad, and they'll be competing this summer. So very exciting. And then I think we're going to be hearing more from robotics here. We've got some pretty cool stuff. Excited to hear from them. They just got back from Houston for world champions, uh, the world championships. And the one thing I want to say about this group of students here, you know, if I'm leaving a basketball game late at night or getting here early in the morning, these guys put in more work than any group that I'm aware of here. So their dedication and commitment is second to none around here. So just want you guys to know that, that their work is incredible here. And then our Envirathon team, they were state champions, and they'll be going on to Nationals this summer. So it's very exciting times around here. And then just want to congratulate our Uball team that was back at State recently. Did a great job. And then for our swim and dive team, you know, we had four divers at State, which was very exciting. So we had Tommy O'Neil, Sam Kroskowski, Quinn Edwards, and Evan Zimbalman. And then on the swim side, we had Grayson Rudich. We have a proud mom in the room here somewhere. And then Tyler Braun, Dominic Henderson, and Ben Hozak. And then more about that, we're also conference champs. And Grayson, he was, he placed fourth at State in the 200 and 500 free. So just did an outstanding job. And then it was exciting watching Evan and Quinn at State there. I mean, Evan was a state champion, and then Quinn, you know, placing second. So very exciting. Then on to girls' basketball, you know, Sarah and Mimi just had outstanding careers here. So Sarah was first team all-conference. Mimi was second team, and then you see Mimi here, she was a thousand-point scorer. As was Sarah. And Sarah also broke our single-game scoring record. Sorry about that. So very exciting. And continuing on here for boys hockey, we had Brady and Charlie again also had great careers. They were all, they were honorable mention. And again, both of them were hundred-point, or they had hundred points in their careers. And then our dance team went back to State second year in a row, which was very exciting for them. And then boys wrestling, we had Bailey Grzinski, had a hundred career wins, and this was a picture, our wrestling team, they won the whole field tournament. So they were pretty excited about that. And then girls' hockey had the best record in the history of our program. We oversee the co-op. And Addie Nowak was second team all-conference, and Elizabeth Bowers was honorable mention. And then for gymnastics here, McKenna was a state qualifier for the second year in a row, and this is, she's pictured here with a teammate from Grafton. We co-op with Grafton for gymnastics. And then boys' basketball, I want to talk about a little bit here. They had a great run going to State. I think we're all aware of that. So we had Logan Zaire, was first team all-conference. Griffin French was second team. And then Owen Hallback was honorable mention. And then we had some records broken here, which generally happens when you have a very successful season. So you see Griffin up there a few times, he broke his own record for season assists. And then for career assists, he also now holds a record. And a lot of those assists went to Logan in the middle there, and he now holds a record for points in a game. And then just some pictures here from their run here. So this is the sectional finals. This was at Manitowoc, which was a lot of fun when they beat Green Bay Notre Dame. And then I think you're all aware here, you know, we have our parade around the school. So this is their picture. We do this with all of our athletes and teams. And then in the upper right-hand corner, when they were regional champs, when they beat Nicolay at Nicolay, which was an exciting win. And then, you know, when you make a run to State, you know, the excitement that it captures the student body and the community. So we have our student section right there, which was instrumental in the run. And then you have a picture of Logan right there, pretty cool dunk. And then finally, we have our winter all-state student athletes here. So we have Evan Zimbalman, Quinn Edwards, and Grayson Rudich. And then some basketball players there, Stare Helm and Logan Zaire. So that rounds up our winter sports season, and a very successful one at that. So I don't know if anyone has any questions or comments.
It's impressive is an understatement. And just thank you for all you do, because there's a lot of behind-the-scenes organization to keep all of this together that you probably can't begin to understand. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
It was exciting to see the robotics team come back here at night for the, I don't know if it's a, I don't think "cour" is the right word, of the escort back from their competition. And I'm, I love following along the Facebook page to be able to see what's going on. So thank you for doing a good job of keeping that up to keep people informed if it's what there is to celebrate.
Sure, no problem. Thank you very much.
All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. With regards to the consent agenda, board members, I ask that you approve the minutes from the regular board meeting on March 19th, 2025, Budget and Finance Report, which includes the summary of account, check register, check detail, and credit card transaction reports, and the personnel report. Mr. DeRosa, Director of Human Resources, will provide a brief overview of the personnel report.
May I interrupt real quick? Sure. Does everyone else have an attachment for the minutes themselves? I do not have an attachment for the minutes. And I looked back in the March meeting, and I don't see any there. So I'm wondering if it's, I know sometimes it takes a while for that to show up, but I didn't see it at all.
I do. You do? Yeah. Do we have a paper copy at all?
Yeah.
Got it.
Thank you. Of course, I'd be one of the problems. Thanks. I can, I can listen and read at the same time, so.
Permission to continue? All right. With the consent agenda and the personnel report, we are seeking your approval. As you can see, it's been a busy time for our administrative team, particularly our building administrators doing a bulk of the hiring. We're seeking your approval for seven resignations and eight contract approvals. And a couple of highlights on this is we have a new assistant principal at Webster Middle School. And so do want to recognize and congratulate Natalie Han, coming from Weston after a number of years as the instructional coach, and welcoming her to Webster Middle School. And one last highlight with our retirements, I absolutely have to give a shout out to Linda Moss. Linda was custodian at Webster, and she completed 40 years of service to the Cedarburg School District, originally hired back in August of 1985. So Linda had a fantastic run at Webster. We are very grateful for her service to the district.
Thank you. I will take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I had asked some, a little bit more specific questions for our personnel report. For the public that sees that attachment, which I do see, I do have that attachment, not the minutes, but I do see this one. And they are all listed as educator. And I had asked if there could be a little bit more detail about those positions, and if we have more information about when those get posted on weekend. And so if we can't, if those are not simple enough questions to ask at this time and receive an answer to, then I would prefer this be separated out of the consent agenda for additional discussion and a separate vote.
So in regards to the position category, so you're looking more, for more specificity?
Correct.
Would you, are you looking for specific positions or more category of maybe classroom teacher or by level?
Sure. So in reading this from a community standpoint, educator is not necessarily assumed to be a counselor or a psychologist or a, you know, I think elementary school is helpful. But certainly those distinctions between counselor and psychology. And so I would like to see that. And my ask ahead of time was that that would be part of the report. So I don't, I don't know if that needed to be communicated differently, but moving forward, especially when we have so many separation of employments and community input on that.
So Samantha Muse is a counselor at Webster. Everyone else in there is either a special education teacher or a classroom teacher.
And then my second question was, they're, they're, these individuals are in our school buildings through the end of the school year. And I would like an understanding of when that's posted on weekend and when those positions are starting to be looking at. My concern at this point is it's, my understanding, because it's not listed specifically, is that this is several of our trusted staff members that work with our students that have support needs. So I, I would just like a better understanding of when those are getting listed on weekend.
Yeah, and many of them have already been posted. Some of them are already being hired at this, at this time. So again, from the individual ones, as you take a look at those, Tony, you can help me out too. When we take a look at the Thorson fifth grade or Thorson position that has been posted, they're looking to interview shortly. The Webster, the two Webster special education positions, those have been posted. The Webster math position has been posted and hired. And then the counselor position has not been posted yet. Correct. Correct. And then the other two, the CHS one, those are actually individuals that are going down to part-time staffs. Correct. Tony, if I'm understanding, you want, you want this in the report detailed out moving forward?
At least verbally, I wasn't sure whether we need to have the position category listed as educator or the more specific classifications of their roles within the district. Thank you for clarifying the weekend posting. When I had looked, I did not see several of those. So I appreciate the clarification on that.
Yeah, and I appreciate your question earlier, your question about the position category. Tony and I actually spent a fair amount of time talking about that in terms of what that would look like. I mean, right now, we, we classify people as either educators or administrators. And so what would be the appropriate delineation of them? And so, like I said, Tony and I did talk about that. We'll look to have more. It's just, we hadn't settled on anything that we felt would be appropriate at this time. I think the origins just came from the contract. There's the educator contract and administrative contract. And so we were just using those broad two categories which had been used.
Would it be possible to use their actual contract category? Because I too had a question on this and had to search the names on the school website to find out where they actually were and what they actually did. The Webster ones I was familiar with, the others I was not. So if it would be possible to have whatever they're listed on the website as being their primary position, what their title is matching whatever, you know?
So generally speaking, the title, so that's the good question that we even talked, because generally speaking with the teacher, they're hired as a teacher. And so they're not necessarily always hired as a second-grade teacher, fifth-grade teacher. They're a teacher, and then we assign them to those. So that's, that's a little bit of what that conversation was about in terms of where we go. Now, certainly you could do that in terms of your certification. So obviously, if you're going to be a math teacher, you have to have that number license. So we'll definitely dig into it a little bit more for that, yeah.
And again, just so individuals understand, board members can ask for details prior to a board meeting, and if those details are relayed, there's not necessarily a need to ask questions. And my concern in consent agenda specifically is that the goal is not to spend as much time on those questions. So I think we're at a point where if we talked more about this, I would be uncomfortable with not pulling it out of consent agenda. So I would be fine stopping here for now, having an understanding of what's going on. And I think there was a motion on the floor, but I don't remember who made it, so.
I believe we had a motion on this. Is there any further discussion?
Oh, I, I'll just say, I appreciate the work of many of these individuals. I'm sad to see them go. I hope they, I wish them the best.
Okay, with that, I will take a vote for the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Vote passes seven zero. Thank you.
And as Tony had mentioned...
Seven zero. Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
As Tony had mentioned, we'd like to recognize Natalie Han. You can just stand up there real quick. She is currently the instructional coach at Weston and will be the assistant principal at Webster next year. So we're, we're excited to have her move up into that role.
Welcome.
All right, we'll transition over to the superintendent's report. This evening, I am pleased to introduce to the board the CHS Hex Hounds Robotics Team, led by CHS Technology and Career Teacher Dan Canice. Dan will provide an overview of some of the great learning experiences students have had in robotics.
Thank you, everybody, school board members, district admin, distinguished guests. Thanks for all of us to come tonight, chew our horn a little bit, tell you about our great season and all the fun things that we've done throughout the 24-25 robotics season. We'll give them just a minute here to try to get set up as, we have a wheelbarrow full of hardware that we like to show off as we had quite the year. So I'm Dan Canice. I am the head coach of the Hex Hounds CHS Robotics Team, also a tech ed teacher for the day. Today I have a variety of Hex Hounds with me. These are my sub-team leaders. I'm going to have them go down the line, line a little bit, and introduce who are the grade level and their contribution.
Hi, I'm Tyler. I'm a senior and I'm a mechanical lead for the team.
Hi, I'm Sam. I'm a sophomore and I am a award presenter.
Hello, I'm Eric. I'm a junior and I help with electrical on the team.
Hi, I'm Nora. I'm a junior and I'm with awards team.
I'm Zachary. I'm a junior and I'm a mechanical lead on the team.
Hi, Mason. I'm a junior. I do programming and drive the robot.
I'm Addy. I'm a senior. I'm a mechanical scout lead.
I'm Grace. I'm a senior and I'm a mechanical lead.
I'm Ben. I'm a sophomore and I do awards and scouting.
I'm Gabe. I'm a junior. I do manufacturing.
Alright, so you see I've got a variety of different grade levels and abilities with me today. And each one of these students had a huge contribution to our team's success this year. So first and foremost, a couple of things we're trying to do today. Now, I'm not trying to go fairly quick. I want to talk about what is robots, what is robotics, what is first our governing body, what we do in the community. I'm going to show you some CAD pictures, really engaging 3D models. We'll talk about manufacturing code and then we'll show you the robot at the end, kind of the, the showpiece of what we have. So first off, while we live at Hex Hounds, CHS Robotics is a unique opportunity for students to show or learn a set of skills that isn't directly taught in a class. While they can learn things like manufacturing, computer science, coding, we go a little bit deeper, right? We give them a chance to apply that in a real-world scenario and work alongside of engineers who are in the field. Variety of pictures up here from both this season and past seasons. So what do Hex Hounds do? Again, in a variety of ways, we teach hands-on skills. It's our goal to teach things like manufacturing, engineering, computer science. But at the end of the day, we're a small business, so we're teaching business, marketing, presenting, strategy, things of that nature as well. Even more of what we do, we are a varsity sport for the mind. We are recognized by the athletics department with Mr. John Hanneman trying to give us varsity letters. So students have the opportunities for those varsity letters through all those contributions, travel, and other things that they've done for the team with outreach. So even more than robots, our mission is to transform the culture in our community. For the longest time, I feel like Cedarburg has had a very deep history in the arts and not as much of a history with manufacturing and STEM education. So we're trying to transform that culture and that identity so that people are more aware of the opportunities that we offer, both within our classrooms and our club and organizations. So a bunch of fun pictures that we pulled, again, a lot from this year, some from previous years. I'll try to tunnel slowly and explain each one. So in the upper left-hand corner, this is a fun event that we started, I think, last year when we got a bunch of Girl Scouts reaching out, different Girl Scout troops. Last year it was one or two. This year, I think, was eight different Girl Scout troops that we hosted in our lab. And we like to do a fun activity called Human Robots. That's where the Girl Scouts sit on the chairs and then one of the Hex Hounds gets to push them around our field. So if you haven't been down to our lab, we have a full-size playing field. They act as robots. So for two and a half minutes, they get to try to score just as the robot would. It's kind of twofold. Number one, so the Girl Scouts can have a fun interactive experience, but also so the Hex Hounds get to see and think about strategy and gameplay. Top middle picture, this was a couple of years ago, we went to the West Lawn Science Fair and we got to play with some robots there and interact with some youth within the community. Top right photo is probably one of the oldest photos that we had, probably around twenty eighteen. But this was a group of students who worked to repurpose a robot given to us from the Ozaki County Sheriff's Department, who actually received it from the military. So that robot came on a boat from overseas, was full of sand, saltwater, and dirt. Kids were able to rebuild it, repurpose it, had a little cannon on the end, so it was like a little RC car that our students were able to rebuild and then purpose back to the sheriff's department. Then a variety of other photos on the bottom. T-shirt carry in the bottom right corner, that's kind of a crowd pleaser. We've done several new segments throughout our history, including one most recently on TMJ4, new show, I think it's called What's Brewing, Wisconsin or something similar, where the kids had an opportunity to do a segment with him. And then another picture with one of our biggest Girl Scout troops this year, kind of in the bottom left. Some of you may have been there, may have heard, we just hosted one of our most successful outreach events of the season. It was the STEM Pancake Breakfast. So yesterday, I think that was Sunday, it feels like a long time ago, but we hosted over four hundred guests, we served over four hundred plates of pancakes, and a variety of other interactive activities for children and adults to, to experience. So the most popular one is going to be that one that's in the middle and where we transformed the CHS cafeteria into a robot Easter egg hunt field. You can see kind of a zoomed-in picture on the right side of a student trying to drive a robot around. And we have Hex Hounds stage around the field and they try to grab a, an egg and then they win a prize. So we have a variety of prizes ranging from crayons and candles and things like that. And then we do, we have the VR lab, so with assistance from the tech department, we get the CSD VR goggles. We set them up in the maker space, so students can have, or participants can have a VR experience. We make buttons, we do a laser activity, and of course, we have a robot demo as well. And I forgot to mention, we do partner with the Webster Robotics Team. They come over and demo their Lego robots too. So beyond all that, beyond all that stuff for outreach, what else do we do? So the Hex Hounds have a season that typically starts in January. So the first Saturday in January is the worldwide release of the challenge. So every year, the Hex Hounds have to build a brand-new robot. So starting from scratch, that first Saturday in January, we give a hundred and fifty page rulebook and have to dissect what the game is. So we develop a strategy, understand how to play the game, how to score, and then we start building. So in about six weeks, we design, manufacture, program, build, wire, test, iterate, industry-sized robot. So we do all of our own CAD. We just strive to build all of our parts in-house. All of our code is done by students. All the building is done by students. And they work alongside of industry professionals. I have a few volunteers who come in who work in the field. So retired engineers, business leaders, and things like that. After about six weeks, our build season is done and we get into the competition season, which is really the fun part. That's where kids get to travel to various locations to compete with other teams around the, I'm going to say around the Midwest, even around the world. So that competition season typically starts the end of February and runs, in this case, to the end of April. This year, we had the luxury of traveling to the ever-tropical Duluth, Minnesota, over to La Crosse, and then up to Minneapolis for another great experience. And then because of our performances in both La Crosse and Minneapolis, we earned a trip to the World Championships in Houston. Alright, so I'm going to back up one, or I guess we'll just watch it. So this is the challenge that gets released that first Saturday in January. This video is what they all wait for.
Welcome to the 2025 First Robotics Competition Game Reef Escape, presented by Haas. Two alliances of three teams each compete to earn points by harvesting algae, seeding coral on their reef, and returning to their barge to ascend to the ocean's surface. Alliances earn additional rewards for meeting specific scoring thresholds and for cooperating with their opponents. Prior to the start of the match, teams can choose to hang a shallow cage or a deep cage on their barge. Robots start each match at their starting line and may be promoted with one coral. During the first fifteen seconds of the match, robots are autonomous and can be programmed to leave the starting line, remove algae from their reef, and place coral on their reef. If all enabled robots on an alliance leave the starting line and score at least one coral in auto, the alliance earns the auto ranking point. During the following two minutes and fifteen seconds of the match, drivers control their robot. Robots can place algae in the net and collect coral from human players at their coral station to place on their reef. Coral placed higher on the reef are worth more points. Each alliance can score enough coral on all four levels, they will earn a future ranking point. Robots can also deliver algae to their processor. Once processed, the algae can be taken by the opposing human player and scored into the net. When two algae are delivered to each processor, both alliances earn a co-op point. A co-op point reduces the number of coral needed on the reef to earn a ranking point and influences a team's rank in the tournament. As time runs out, robots race back to their barge to hang on their cage and ascend to the ocean's surface. Points are awarded to robots that can hang on a shallow cage, and even more points are awarded to robots that can hang on a deep cage. An alliance that scores enough barge points will earn a barge ranking point. The alliance that earns the most points overall wins the match.
I hope everybody was taking notes. There's a test at the end. So that's the video that gets kicked off on that first Saturday in January. It is a worldwide release. So right around eleven, eleven AM Central Standard Time, that video is published to the world. So again, we compete with teams not only in Wisconsin and Midwest, but we're looking at Israel, Australia, Turkey, Mexico, and beyond. So once we get that video, then the work begins. Sorry, we're going to try to get past that one. We start with our design. So again, we go through strategy and we have to essentially CAD a robot. So CAD is how we plan for everything that we do with CAD, our 3D modeling software, which is taught in one of our Level One Engineering courses. We design everything from the chassis, the mechanisms, the bumpers, and all the pieces that interact with the game pieces. So this year's game piece was, I'm going to say underwater, ocean-themed. We have an algae and a coral. So the coral was the PVC pipe, which is pretty standard, available at any hardware store. So it's a forged PVC pipe. And then the algae was a sixteen-inch playground ball. So like that one you used to play with when you get hit in the face and makes that dodge and bounce. That's exactly what it is. So we go through a lot of CAD. I'm going to have some of my students speak to the CAD and what they do. But the purpose of our CAD, not only is to help plan, but also so that we can manufacture parts, right? So we use those files to directly export them into some of the equipment machines that we have in our STEM facility. So I'm going to bring out the robot a little bit. Mason, if you wouldn't mind, bring it out to the front. And I'm going to have just a few students talk about their contributions and the pieces of the body.
So right on the bell, we knew we wanted.
Let's bring the robot out. Let's bring it out in front so they can see. And Zachary, you can go up. The mic is on, bud. We do have the robot on leash, so don't worry, it won't get away. Mr. Hamm was worried, but don't worry, Don, I will protect you. So right now, the robot is enabled. He's going to do his best to try to drive it out in front of the podium so you can get a better look at the 2025 championship robot. Alright, and I'll bring Zachary out. Zachary's going to talk about the piece that accepts coral.
So right after we watched the video, we really wanted some way to place the coral. And to start, we have to first get it into the robot in a consistent and accurate way so that we can manipulate it however we want. So originally, we decided on a funnel, kind of as a team after a lot of strategy talk. And so we had kind of a big box with wheels along the sides to guide the game piece into the robot. Some of the challenges we had with our first design was that it was very heavy and there is a weight constraint on the robot of a hundred and fifteen ounces here, which is lower than in previous years. And so I don't want to say we scrapped that design, but we ended up kind of putting it off to the side and kind of replaying with new materials and had different ways to mount it to the robot. So eventually, we came up with the design you see here. This was after a lot of testing with new materials. So the stuff here is kind of a carbon fiber mixed with like a plasticky sort of blend. We found it's very light, but we did have difficulties with machining it and manufacturing it. So we had to play a lot with that. Right before our World Championships, we did decide to add those power wheels on top, which I think Tyler wanted to talk about.
Yeah, so as Zachary mentioned, we made this addition right before the World Championships. As we had noticed at our previous competitions, we had some difficulty getting it in very efficiently, which was going to be a big part at the World Championships. So we added these powered rollers to make sure that we can get it in as fast as possible. And from there, we would feed it through our elevator, which would bring it up to the reef on any level to our coral manipulator. Our coral manipulator is double-sided rollers, which are mounted straight onto our elevator and can go up to any level on the reef as we would like.
Nice. And then you on top. Sorry.
And then we have our second mechanism mounted to the first part called the algae arms. So these, this mechanism really highlights the strategy and iterations we've done throughout as a team. So this mechanism is used to pick up the giant ship balls, algies. Initially, we had it from the side of the robot to pick up from the ground only. But throughout the build season, we went through strategy and iterations to find that building it or making it, the algae arms articulated on the coral mechanism was the most efficient as well as the most effective when manipulating the game piece. Then we also talked as a team with like what world champion robots would be doing. We figured this is the best mechanism to do that.
So for the climber, at the end game with the last twenty points, we had to climb three, on the cage that was three and a half inches off of the ground. And it was, one of our challenges was that the cage could, or the chain could be in the center of the robot. So we worked with a lot of iterations and simulations in CAD to try and figure out the center of gravity of the robot and figure out what our mech should look like. One thing I think is a really cool aspect of the climber is just how many iterations we went through to get to the point where we are now. So as Grace mentioned, we started with like pure like simulations in CAD and we probably went through about thirty or thirty or forty iterations just on CAD alone. And then as soon as we started manufacturing, we went through multiple iterations that way with cutting out different parts. We had a lot of issue with the chain and sprocket breaking and it's just kind of working through everything with the 3D printed parts to get to where we are now, where we have a successful climber.
So from a programming standpoint, the first thing, the most important thing is all the cameras and sensors we use on the robot, as well as automating as many controls as we can. So the elevator sequence that we showed earlier, we press a button and it goes to a set height using a sensor to detect how high it is. We also use about four or five cameras around the robot to detect where we are in the field, as well as which pieces we have. The robot knows everything about it and what it can do. So during the game, there's autonomous mode with fifteen seconds of pre-programmed function, where we do not drive it. The robot needs to sense its surroundings and drive itself to score pieces. This is the more difficult mode, but the points are worth more, so we spent a lot of time tuning that in. Then during the teleoperative mode, we also automate portions of that as well. So instead of manually driving and trying to align, we hold buttons down and press presets as well.
So another key component of our competitions and placing isn't just the robot, it's watching other robots compete. So in the stands where we have everything kind of going down with the robot on the field, we also have a team of people called scouters, whose job is to watch the robots and take notes on the points they score, their strategy, their speed, a ton of stuff like that. That data is extremely useful for later on in the competitions during something called alliance selections, where you actually kind of pick your team that you're working with for the playoffs of the competition. So our Mason over here, who is our coder, designs apps that collects all of our data that we can use. I don't know if we'll talk about that at all, but down on the, down on the field, when we're talking to alliance selection, it's me, Mason, and Ben who do that, it's very helpful to just cycle through data quickly and make kind of in-the-moment decisions based on robots and communicate quickly with them.
So much like the NFL draft that you just watched, the NFL draft gets like ten minutes for their round. These students get much less. How much was our first round? How much time? Minute and a half to make a pick. So it's a snake draft. Sorry, forty-five seconds for their first pick and a minute and a half for their second pick. So they utilize all of this data to make on-the-fly picks and decisions.
So before we can even get to a competition with a robot, we first have to manufacture it. So we use CNC machines. There's one picture of somebody at the router. So we use our CNC router along with all the other tools in our amazing shop that we have up by our lab to manufacture everything from our field to everything on the robot. We also use 3D printers pretty extensively this year. So any of the weird geometries that you see on the robot that are fun, different colors, So any of the weird geometries that you see on the robot that are fun, different colors, are all 3D printed out of different materials.
It is quite the luxury that we do have a full-size FRC field at our disposal. That's not something that a lot of teams have. And I am proud to say that we were the first in Southeast Wisconsin, or the entire state of Wisconsin, to have a full FRC field in a high school. Since then, when we built it, opened it up in 2020, there have been two other high schools who have came into our facility, toured it, and then copied what we have because they saw the value in that as well. Those schools being Nicolay and Brookfield East. Oops, sorry. So I do wanna show one video of a match this year. It's probably one of my most meaningful matches ever as a coach, because it was our first win of an event. If you haven't been to a robotics event before, it's a mixture of a science fair, a rock concert, and an athletics event. It's really kind of all of that in one, especially in some of the venues that we're in. So we're in a lot of college, rookie rings and things like that. So it's big stadium seats, loudspeakers, a lot of people cheering for you. So this, this video, and Brenda, I'm gonna apologize because I think I clicked back on it. This video was from Seven Rivers Lacrosse. This was the moment when we won our first regional in, I think, 15 or 16 years of being
Three, two, one, go! We are the autonomous once again. It could be our final match here. Red Alliance, one match away from a set of blue banners. Blue though, putting up a fight. Currently, two to Red Alliance's three. Here's the third for Hex Hounds. We're all tied up coming out of autonomous. Thirty to thirty. Ben Feld ready with another. TC, another themselves. Blue or blue. A fourth already on the red. Hex Hounds, de-aldification for them. They're going up, up, up to their net, opening up those scoring opportunities. We're partners with Cory facing the defense. A hard hit knocks that coral out, but they're back at the reef after a miss there. A robot on, and they're a hard hit against that anchor, but these robots are still moving. Eighty twenty-four, playing defense on your blue.
We did get some analogy from probably a 2025 lacrosse.
It is 3197, going for more on level five. TC, up in the net. Currently, seventy-two to sixty-one, Alliance number two has the advantage. But here comes another coral from Ripley. Hex Hounds also with a coral of their own, popping another 10 points combined on there. TC, up, up, up. Nothing but net for them. Hex Hounds matching them. There it is, cleaning it up. De-aldification, twenty-two twenty-five, losing the bumper. Let's see what they can do in the meantime as they try to grab onto their anchor here. Looks like they're disabled. Seventy twenty-one is trying to play, keeps scoring. Blue's gonna be down a robot and doing a meaningful 10 with this robot and its defense that has been a flaw in many alliances tied with the entire event. At 30 seconds, red retakes the lead. They are going up. Spartan's still with that defense. Hex Hounds around the back, level three, they're trying. Ripley, level two up front, for more undefended. These two robots looking absolutely immaculate, pulling out, extending this lead to 10 points. There's 20 seconds. We see Ripley trying to, Ripley trying to go up. TC trying to go up. Spartan's trying to go up. Ripley's up. Ben Feld's up. TC's up. Spartan's trying to go up. Three seconds, can they make it? For red, number one alliance with a score of 167 points are your 2025 Seven Rivers Regional Champions.
Teams, you might have watched that video probably 10 times, it doesn't get old. Just love hearing it. So that was a pretty cool, pretty cool opportunity for our kids, both celebrating on the field and then having all the other students from the stands come down. And then as Miss Kade pointed out, we did get arranged an escort back into town from PD and FD, but it was rather late, so some of you might have been sleeping, so I'm not real sorry, it looks pretty awesome. So beyond that, obviously, we had a great robotics season, really kicking it off. We were, Brenda, I need some help, sorry, thanks. She'll figure it out, I trust. We had a great season, not only in lacrosse. We went to Duluth before that, where we were the first pick in the number one alliance. So they do a draft. We're the first pick number one alliance in Duluth, first pick number one alliance in lacrosse, first pick number one alliance in Minneapolis. So kind of the saying, always a bride's may never a bride, but we were a very good team throughout the year within our region, and then earned our berth into the world championships. We have more a little bit to talk about. It's one of the biggest awards that we've won this year called the Impact Award.
Awards, I'll go back to our team mission, which is to change the culture of our community. We do this through all of the outreach events with Girl Scouts, be part of your coding club, and teach elementary schools how to code. We try to show, at competition, we need to show this to the judges in a measurable, in a measurable way. So we keep documentation of all the outreach we do. We put it in a large binder, we give a seven-minute presentation. Me and Ben and Sam are the presenters, and yeah, if you have any, let's hear your very outreach.
I think it's really cool what all we do, I mean, just recently we're staff breakfast, but we outreach so many different things, and this is an opportunity for us to get to show off what we do.
Yeah, so our presentation this year was a bit water-themed, and it was about how, as a smaller team with only 27 people, we're able to make a big splash. And we have a really well memory.
So the Impact Award is called the most prestigious award at first. It is the hardest to win. We won this award back in '22, called the Chairman's Award, and then now again in '25. And they do recognize these large awards with blue banners. So if you happen to walk by the CHS cafeteria, we'll get them back on display. Our team before '22 had zero blue banners. This year, we've won three, so quite the accomplishment. And then kind of lead into that, just to talk about some of our team's accomplishments this season and wrap up what we have. There's lots of viewpoints, lots of things that I could talk about. I could probably talk to you guys for another hour about robots. But just to give you kind of a summary, we competed in three regional events, which is the most regional events we've ever competed in in one season. Regional events are open to any, any team that applies, and it's kind of a lottery system to get in. We are two-time regional winners, one-time impact winners. We won the creativity award. I think Eric had the creativity award. There are judged awards at every event beyond the big ones, so awards like engineering, awards for engineering imagery, team spirit, things like that. The creativity award really highlighted our aesthetic design, but also use of 3D printed materials. We went to the world championships this year, which is quite an accomplishment. The world championships accept 600 teams from around the world. There are approximately 3,000 teams registered, and we were one of those 600. And in this case, we're in three and two in double elimination play, ranking us third in our division. We were 44 and 13 and one throughout the season. And new this year, there is a Wisconsin State Championship for FRC, and I'm happy to report that we are the number one ranked team in the state of Wisconsin going in. So June 14th, we will be competing at Sheboygan North High School. All right, and one other highlights, I brought a couple of them with me today. We got graduating four seniors. I believe they all are talkways. I'm almost positive. Tyler's going to Iowa, Grace is going to Platteville. I'm not sure where Addison's going. Addison's going to Iowa as well, and I have Gavin who couldn't make it tonight. So that's also a huge accomplishment. I think that wraps it up. I don't know if there are any questions, any other things I know I went, got a little bit long in there, sorry. Anybody wanna see more robot tricks? I did a backflip once this year in Houston. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
I ask a question. I was gonna say, I feel like there's a handful of us up here, so go for it.
So first of all, I wanna say thank you to the kids and how well you did this year and how well you represented Cedarburg. And also thanks to Dan Kinnies for, I know how many hours the kids put in, but you put in more, I'm sure, and it's impressive, and it shows, honestly. But here's my question. At Worlds, how confident were you of getting an alliance pick on Saturday?
Zero. So with our strategy data, we went through, we have a scouting meeting to be in the night before alliance selections, and we come up with a pick list, right, of the, the top 24 in this case, it was probably like 32 robots, and we do mock drafts after that. With our mock draft, we actually had us kind of as the, a third pick, kind of a backup robot, not in a playing role due to some mechanical issues and things like that. But because of our team's resiliency and our ability to do algae from the ground, we were picked by that number seven seed.
How do you figure out who does what and how do you determine your team leads? I mean, is it kind of mirror what a corporation would be doing in building something, or?
Yeah, it's very similar. So we have kind of a small development program for freshmen sophomores coming in. We have a preseason, so much like your football team might have a preseason where it's offseason lifting, quarterback meets with receivers, run routes, things like that. Our freshmen sophomores come in to meet with the seniors and juniors in October, November, and we work on building other robots. So we built small robots. Actually, Zachary was the lead on probably the smallest robot we've ever built. It was about this big, and we trained students on that to try to find their interest and pathways. Then we do a lot of shadowing throughout the season. So FRC can be very overwhelming to a freshman or sophomore coming in, as there's a lot to do, as you can see. But if they can grill it out a season and understand the roles and opportunities, kind of, I don't wanna say sit the bench, because that's not a great analogy, but they can learn behind being understudy of a junior or senior, they can find their niche and their role and what they want to do. And sometimes that role is a little bit predetermined based upon needs of the team. So sometimes I have a really mechanical-heavy team. I have a lot of kids who can CAD, a lot of kids who can manufacture. I don't have a lot of kids who can wire, do control. So I might push a few kids in that direction who might show that interest. But it's really kind of student interest, and we give them a little exposure in the preseason.
I was curious about the app building for the, for pulling that data together from the floor. I know you didn't wanna talk about it, but I'm really, I guess I can sum it up, I say, is that new? Is that since 2022? Who's taking that on? Because it's really important.
Yeah, so before my time on the team, we used Google Spreadsheets as well as a Google Form. But as the game progressed and our teams progressed, we can do better than that with the custom data we wanna collect. So we created a custom dashboard in the offseason of '23, where we can analyze the data better through a website. And then this year, we created a custom app for the scouting as well, for the data collection part of it. We run that on Android tablets, and that just allows us to do custom things that other forms don't offer us, like Google Forms, as well as better data spatial and more reliability when at the venue, we have bad data, bad Wi-Fi connection.
There's a question that is unrelated to tech at all, but I'm very curious about your, the outfits you guys wear. Excuse me, everyone, not guys, but everyone wears. And I'm very curious, because I, I'm a superfan. I'm the nerd who was there at 11:00 PM in my room, because whether you all know it or not, you're incredible role models for, my son's in middle school, and you're just great, great role models. So in any event, I'm a nerd who can't watch things and I can't be in person, because I have a hard time with the flashing lights and things like that. But I am, whenever I see the pictures, I find myself really curious if it's hard to do some of the things that you do with the long shirts and the bow ties versus a t-shirt.
It's very hard to stay cool. So the uniform predates me. There's a little bit of a tradition associated with the orange bow tie. When I started, it was khaki pants, black belt, and the long-sleeved shirt, and I quickly decided that an orange belt would be the ticket to making us look flashy. I was a young thundercat, thought ahead style. Since then, we have not graduated from that. I have taken a team vote to see if they'd wanna change uniforms. And every year, jorts and cutoffs always comes up, and I didn't think that was as good of a look. So actually, our Impact Team kind of built the presentation last year on the orange bow tie. It's really what we've been kind of known for, not only within our community, but also at competition, where always, it really is the uniforms. So on practice day, we have a practice day on a Thursday typically before the competition, we'll wear our orange t-shirts, jeans, shorts, whatever it might be. And then when competition starts that Friday, Saturday, you put the game uniform on. So much like football has a practice uniform, basketball has practice jerseys, we have our practice shirts, and then we have the uniform. You know when that orange bow tie goes on, it's game time.
Thank you. Do you retire the robot, and does it have a name? And then what happens at the end of the season?
Yeah, great question. Robot this year does have a name, and his team voted. This year's team name was Hammerhead. At one point in time, it did look like a shark. It kind of does with little tail, right? The robot does get retired, but probably not until December of '25. Right now, we do have the Wisconsin State Championship to look forward to in June, so that's an upcoming competition. We do a couple summer events. It's called offseason events, one in McGuanego called M-Rock, that's in July. And then when school returns to try to get our new members, their feet wet, we go down to Tremont, Illinois for a day and a half competition called the Robotier Rumble. So this robot still has a few competitions left in it. But once we get to that end of season, sort of that December timeframe, we retire the bot. This one will probably be remembered and held together for quite some time. We try to keep all of our bots together, a little bit as a showpiece, but also so we can learn from them in years to come. So we don't like pictures and CAD models, but it's nice to be able to go back and look at the bot and say, oh, how did we do this? What did you do there? And how did it work?
Great job.
Thank you. Appreciate all your time. Thank you. I think we're done.
Okay, I don't have anyone signed up for public comment. Is there anyone here who would like to speak? All right, and Dr. Clark, do you wanna proceed with recommendations?
All right. This evening, we will be presenting five recommendations to the board. The first recommendation is for the board to approve all full-time and part-time teacher contracts for the 2025-26 school year as presented. Those, the list of contracts were in your board docs for board owners.
Okay, I will take a motion to approve, taking action on the teacher contract renewals.
I will make a motion to approve the contracts as presented.
I will second any discussion. Okay, all those in favor? All right. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion to approve the, to take action regarding teacher contract renewals for the next school year is approved, six zero. Thank you.
All right. The next recommendation is for the board to approve the 2025-26 CISA One contract as presented. The contract of $102,300 is for the CISA One membership, one seat at Turning Point, and three seats at the Ozaki Community High School.
Okay, I will take a motion regarding the CISA One contractual agreement for next year. So moved. I will second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Abstentions? A unanimous approval for the 2025-26 CISA One contractual agreement. Thank you.
All right. Next, we are looking for the board to approve the policy updates for the following policies. 1100 district organization, 1101 temporary administrative arrangements, 1130 ethics and code of conflict, ethics and conflict of interest, 1241 non-renewal or termination of the district's administrator's contract, 2210 curriculum development, 2270 religion in the curriculum, 2271.01 Start College Now program, 2416 student privacy and parental access to information, 2440.01 summer or interim school attendance, 2464 advanced learning instruction, 3214 staff gifts, 3230 ethics and conflict of interest, 3281 personal property of staff members, 3440 job-related expenses, 4124 notice of reasonable assurance of employment, 4214 staff gifts, 4230 ethics and conflict of interest, 4440 job-related expenses, 5113 open enrollment program inter-district, 5330 administration of medication, emergency care, 5341 emergency medical authorization, 5411 third-grade promotion and retention at-risk students, 5505 academic honesty, 5610.03 alternatives to expulsion, 5611 due process rights, 5710 student complaints, 6110 grant funds, 6111 internal controls, 6112 cash management of grants, 6114 cost principal spending federal funds, 6231 budget implementation, 6235 fund balance, 6325 procurement federal grants and funds, 6620 petty cash, 7310 disposition of personal property, 7410 maintenance, 7430 safety standards, 7440 facility security, 7450 property inventory, 7540.03 student technology acceptable use and safety, 7540.04 staff technology acceptable use and safety, 7540.07 district-issued student email account, 8120 volunteers, 8305 information security, 8531 free and reduced-priced meals, 8600 transport Eighty-six hundred transportation. These are all second readings.
Good job listing that. Okay, I will take a motion to approve the policies that Dr. Clark just, um, listed.
I'll move to approve the policy updates as presented.
I will second that. Any discussion? Oh, I, excuse me. Uh, thank you for leading those, Dr. Clark. Um, the, our, our committee meetings are streamed, but there was recording of this particular meeting done. And it was, um, mentioned that there was a board member asked about one of the policies for volunteers, I think it was, Dr. Clark?
Yes.
So, um, I just wanted to kind of share for anyone that didn't, didn't attend that meeting in person, which I wasn't at in person, but I did watch it, um, as it was available. And, uh, I just wanted to kind of clarify something. My ask was in relation to committee members asking if board members, um, needed to have background checks done before they serve as board members and that. So I didn't feel as though it was quite communicated the way it was intended. So I wanted to just clarify what the ask was, um, if there were any questions about that. And then just stating appreciation for, there's like weird feedback. I don't know if you hear that or if it's just me, um, for, for the availability to hear the discussion that was had by, um, not just committee members or alternates, but board members that are very well-versed in, um, policies that affect our students and staff and community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, I will take the vote to approve the, um, policy update. Oh, no, yeah, we have a motion in a second. Okay, I will take a vote to approve the policy updates. All in favor? All right. Aye. All right. Any opposed? Any ex, any, um, abstentions? If the vote passes six zero, thank you.
All right. The next recommendation is for the board to approve the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six visual impairment, deaf and hard of hearing and orientation and mobility services agreements as presented. The district uses High Educators LLC to provide these required IEP services. We've been very satisfied with their work this school year and are looking to extend the agreement for another school year. Services provided will be paid out of the federal flow-through grants and each service will be billed in fifteen-minute increments at a rate of twenty-five dollars.
I would make a motion to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six visual impairment, deaf and hard of hearing and orientation and mobility service agreements. Second.
Any discussion? Let's take a vote. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six visual impairment, deaf and hard of hearing and orientation and mobility services agreements. Thank you.
All right, thank you. The last recommendation is for the board to accept the following donations to the district. Four thousand dollar donation from the Cedarburg Athletic Booster Club Incorporated. The donation will be used to support the cost of Frasmo, the Cedarburg High School softball field. Two thousand seven hundred twenty dollars and fifty cent donation from Cedarburg Football Incorporated. The donation will be used to support the Cedarburg High School's baseball program. Five thousand dollar donation from Randy Growth. Uh, the donation will be used to support the Cedarburg High School robotics program. Ten thousand dollar donation from the Scott Pump, a, a Velo company. The donation will be used to support the Cedarburg High School robotics program. A two thousand five hundred dollar donation from the Greater Milwaukee Foundation Incorporated. The donation will be used to support the Cedarburg High School robotics program. And twenty-eight thousand five hundred dollar donation from the Cedarburg Education Foundation. The donation will be used to purchase Vex kits and three D printers for PLTW classes at Webster Middle School. These are approved. The total donations for April will be fifty-two thousand, seven hundred twenty dollars and fifty cents. And for the year, we would have a total donation of three hundred thirty-five thousand, eight hundred thirty-seven dollars and eighty cents.
I will take a motion to approve the donations. Still moved?
Second.
All, any discussion?
I just want to say how impressive it is that the robotics team has brought in as many donations as they have and suggest that whatever we can do as a board to help promote that program and others like it, especially, uh, with students coming in from Webster, we're showing an interest because the fact that the community has taken that much interest in that program is, it's awesome.
Agreed. Any other discussion? All those in favor to approve the donations as presented? Aye.
Aye.
Any, um, let's see, any against? Any, all, any abstentions? Okay, motion passes six zero. Thank you.
That's it for recommendations.
Okay, we are going to move on to committee reports. And since Ms. Charland, board member Charland is absent, she sent me the curriculum committee report, which I am going to read from the April ninth, twenty-twenty-five curriculum committee. We reviewed an updated version of the multilingual learner guidebook with Cara Alonson. Plan is available on board docs and will be reviewed again at the May meeting. Liz Smith and Heather Van De Sandy Johnson joined us for an update on the CHS ninth through eleventh grade English pilot. Three curriculums were piloted this year in eleventh grade. HMH into literature, BFW and Norton Anthologies. Ninth and tenth grade piloted into literature and BFW. The team's recommendation for all three grade levels is HMH into literature, which is also the curriculum used at Webster. Board members may review the resources online and the team will be back at the curriculum committee in May to answer questions. And the committee will discuss moving the curriculum forward for board approval. Ally Rudig presented an update on the Webster Middle School homeroom resource. The committee working on the resource to support PBIS narrowed down the list of potential resources from ten to four. We will hear an update at the next meeting, will, which takes place on May seventh. And since the career was the policy committee chair, I am just going to make some, I'll give the report for the policy committee meeting that was held April sixteenth. Obviously we, um, pass all, you heard all of the policies that were, um, just passed. There was one policy eighty-one twenty-five, which is a new policy for consultants. And that one is going to be brought back. We're just going to have further discussion as to what is really considered a consultant for this policy. And the next meeting is scheduled for August fourteenth, which is tentative depending on what policies need to be presented. And then, um, Connie, the board member Connie, um, and Kate is going to give us a WASB delegation report.
Uh, board members in front of you is a printout. Um, this is, I, I don't know if it's this light, if it's, if you guys are going to have feedback from me?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna use my opera training and speak loudly. Um, so you have a printout in front of you that has some different, um, items that have occurred in the past few months. You'll notice that the agenda is worded slightly differently where it says committee delegate representative leaders on reports. Um, so I appreciate that agenda wording being worked on to afford an opportunity to actually share in more depth, the different things that I do as your, uh, WASB delegate, not just at the spring, um, the, or EdCon where there's a vote, but also to share some of the other opportunities that WASB has. Um, these are all, it's broken down by day at the Capitol, which was March twelfth. And you'll see the agenda. You'll see in highlighted section, the two WASB priorities. Then you'll see after that, some, um, different items that were, that were made available to attendees of that, uh, day at the Capitol. Um, Brenda, I shared this with you. Does this get added to the agenda later for anyone else to be able to see?
I'm packing, yes.
So the packet, okay, great. Um, if you flip over the page, you'll see, um, the, that there's many webinars. WASB offers webinars that are both complimentary, meaning it's part of your, uh, what you pay into. And then there's also webinars that districts can elect to pay for. And, uh, members can also receive points for attending those webinars. Um, that is, it is a, a process that maybe could use some improvement from the reporting side because it's a little tricky to report. But I've just given a, a rundown of how many webinars, um, I have attended, uh, approximately and to give you an idea of the different topics that are covered. Um, and then under that communications, uh, one thing I'm not sure who all is aware of or quite how that is best communicated is that for the past two years, I've served as our, um, our Region Fifteen PNR rock, which means I have a great opportunity to talk with board members throughout the state. And so I do my best to just keep good relationships going. And I noticed that there were three that were leaving the board. Um, and so I did, of course, just send them a thank you, uh, email for their service. And then we also have a new Region Fifteen, um, director. So, uh, an email was sent to, uh, Larry congratulating him and just a little bit of time to talk to him about Cedarburg. Um, and then just in that other section, there is a, uh, a, uh, this is a free time or it's an unpaid registration, ask WASB one-on-one. There's a new strategic plan that's being introduced. And so there'll be a series that members can basically tune in, listen to the strategic plan and also offer questions ahead of time, um, that can be answered during those sessions. Uh, I've included the mission statement for WASB at the bottom there. And then I've also brought along with me what was given to any of the attendees for a day at the Capitol. So you guys can take a look at that if you'd like. I'll box it down. Um, usually I have extras, so you can take some, but I do not have extras. So if you don't mind looking and leaving, I would appreciate it. Um, and, uh, again, I just thank you for wording the agenda in such a way that I could share a little bit more about the efforts that have been going on at least for this year. Um, it's, I greatly enjoy. As you can tell, I'm pretty passionate about, about all of that and just being able to talk to people across the state. And I appreciate the, the work done. That's it.
Thank you very much. And thank you, everyone. This, I'm looking forward to this, um, new year with Paul on board and I will also get better at leading these meetings. It's a new one for me as well. So I will take a motion for adjournment. I will motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in, any discussion?
I think you did a good job leading the, the rhetoric, so.
Thank you. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes six zero. Good night. Thank you, everyone.